Okay, so our last, the last big move for us to talk about is the identity focal points. And so we're gonna, I'm gonna go through why this is important, our overall target. But then we will talk about, there are three of these areas and we're gonna talk about them one by one, so that, because there are specific things about the physical characteristics of each other. But the idea, you can see these three purple areas on the graphic. Again, these are, these are not precise parcel boundaries, but just kind of the general intent of the areas that we're talking about when we're talking about these identity focal points. The important point here really is that first one, that there needs to be something distinctive at these key points that tells somebody that they've arrived in Lewisville, that they've arrived in a different kind of community that creates interest, that creates that sense of place. There need to be those kinds of special places within the community that help with that identity that we've been talking about. In this, in this package, that, this vision that we've developed with the discussions of all of the committees, the charade and so forth, we've identified these three places as being important focal points that fit the bill. And so, we wanna be able to look at each of those, create a master developer, kind of a considerate for each of them, because it's not a simple process to think about all the things that go into making a successful focal point. You think this is a really important move for Lewisville, because it creates these places where you can direct the new investment? This is in addition to Old Town, and in a way, that Old Town area, the other big move we talked about yesterday, is really sort of like the bigger version of these identity focal points. And these are smaller and more particular locations, but they combined with Old Town, so you've got a different sense of scale. That regional gateway aspect is a really important one that we think about, we were just talking about a little during the break, that when you're coming on I-35 from the south or from the north, you don't really know when you're in Lewisville, so that kind of a gateway. And then the last point, I think, is also one that's really important to comment about. And that is, and because that was part of our discussion with committees, to have a lot of conversation about the whole, all of these commercial quarters and so forth. And there's a lot of area like that in Lewisville, where there's sort of aging commercial, and to try to take it, to try to do something about all of it all at once is very overwhelming. And so, Paris may get into this in more detail as we go forward, but rather than trying to dilute your effort and try to think about all of those things, the idea here is to concentrate your effort on certain key places, and once those start to change and start to be recreated, then some of that interest can then move up and down those quarters. So, I think this is one of those questions about what's the most effective thing, that the kind of comment about what yields the most results that, that we were talking about on Thursday evening. So, that's why we really have tried to focus on these three areas, rather than entirely up and down all of the different individual commercial quarters. So, as I said, we're gonna talk about each of these three, just one at a time. I'm gonna highlight just the basics here, and then Paris is gonna go into a little more detail, and we want to get your discussion and feedback on each of these three focal point areas. So, as we go along, we'll talk about each one individually. The first one is the southern gateway, I-35, really the point at which you're entering Lewisville if you're coming up from the south. And the, the action priorities, let's see, we have six, there's six action priorities related to this focal point. The Lake Point Shopping Center, and a change in the way that those uses are structured and located. This is something that Paris can talk to you about in more detail if you wanna get into it, but basically concentrating the uses that are there now in a way that makes room for new activity and new kinds of development over time. Supporting the Houghines construction of a bridge in this area. The strong graphic presence for this gateway, obviously this builds on the work that you've already done with the I-35 corridor identity program, but we really see that as an important short-term action priority here, so that it does create that, that presence as people are on 35. Explore the need for a public improvement district or a TIF, some other kind of a tool to maintain improvements. Create an incentive package that ties back to these things, again, trying to make sure that the incentives that you use really get, really go to the point where they change the results. And then the last one here, and this is really sort of a big, big bunch of items, which is strengthen and support the vitality of Vista Ridge Mall. The committees had lots of conversation, and in the public input, lots of conversation about something else needs to happen there. And so, the recommendations here, I think, were what Paris was experiencing with properties of this kind. So, I'm gonna stop there, and we can talk about the southern gateway, and perhaps a discussion on that, and on these action priorities for this area. Then we'll look at the other two gateways, and then I think come back to just the general notion of having focal points. Yes?
Yeah, we've talked a lot about the plan, the strength of having the green space. And when I first read this section, the picture I had in mind was more the typical, you know, monument sign, stone, whatever, but I'm thinking now that I would love to see perhaps the city's logo, but done with plants, done with landscape, so that it plays further on that green idea, that concept. And I think it's also a much more organic and much more interesting to see that, as opposed to yet another monument sign.
James is capturing these notes as he's, as he's been doing. Okay, great, thank you. Comments from other people?
Where would you do that? That would be visible in...
The side of Mount Lewisville.
Yeah, those are the good ones.
I'll make a, I'll make a couple comments, if that's all right.
If Paris wants to use the...
All of these focal points, and there are other areas that can be focal points as well, but the point is to kind of zoom in on a specific development area, engage with the landowners, and work out a common strategy to achieve everybody's goals, that's the thing. So, what's interesting about this is you say arguably, well, this is the most intense commercial area of the entire city, because you have all, you have all mall-related development areas, you still have some land that's yet to be able to be developed, you've got a big project that's underway with the Houghines moving, rail, you know, highways coming through, natural buzz. So, when you get in and look closely, it's, there are areas of need, as you know. You've got issues of vacancy, you've got issues of even the mall, the product of the mall itself, you know, and where their sales tax is, if you know all that, I don't have that. But, so when you look at the uses in the mall, for instance, and you compare this, this is the same collection of retail uses that you find in the Domain in Austin, I mean, to the Domain, very active area up there on the north side, but it's a very different environment from a place. This is great, you know, back to when it was done, and the owners are writing that out now, and they're doing a good job, the professional terms, it's gonna be a leasing strategy. But that doesn't mean that this collection of real estate products is something that all of us wanna go hang out in all the time, right? That's the basic issue, so, and they know that. They're, they're involved in other projects around the country that are, you know, that have, that are plucking in other uses, et cetera. But it's, it's a very careful conversation, because to go in with a plan that either dismantles the mall and shows another development, actually like that, is gonna, they're gonna be real defensive for that idea, because it's a huge investment that you place, as would any one of these padside owners and operators. With all that said, it's pretty clear that that collection of real estate in there, over time, is gonna evolve, it's gonna be meaningful from a, from a market standpoint. The same thing's true with this power center that's over here, and there are signs of distress throughout that, you know, the uses and where they're cycling down, so the thought was, this one's probably a little easier, frankly, than, than this over here, because there are some operations that are doing well, you've got a couple owners in here. But if there's a way to, to maximize and kind of focus the retailers that are doing well, in an area that allows, for instance, the government to open up for some additional new development, that's a real estate opportunity, that's a business opportunity for the landowners and the development marketplace, especially since you've got Houghines back here, and they're in risk with, you know, connections that could be made. That's now, you've got a master developer that's already there, you know, they're, they may not own it, but they can work with the property owners to let that change down there and kind of create a more meaningful gateway. And as that happens, you think about the landscaping out in front versus, as we go put a monument and landscaping right here, it would be nice, but it doesn't solve some of the real estate dilemmas that were existing here, if that makes sense, tax-based building city to stop them. I know, you know, I happen to know this property owner down here that has some office land, and they have struggled for a while to deliver office space there. And the question has been, we can't get anyone to get traction, we can't get traction with someone, because why, we're having a hard time, why someone wants to be right there and work right there? And yet, you'd say, well, you have, you know, over a million square feet of retail on all these restaurants, all the ingredients are there, it's just the place apparently isn't, the location isn't, you know, up to a level that has made people go here versus somewhere else in the region. And, you know, that, that's emblematic of a real estate problem and a neighborhood problem long-term that needs to be solved, and the only folks that can solve that are you, working with them. Can I? Elaborate a little bit? Okay? Please.
Maybe you wanna make a comment first?
Yeah, I can make a comment about the, that specific site that Paris was pointing out. It's a developer that we worked with very, very closely recently, we had a project coming to you again, it was getting incentives for this, for this use that actually, right, was in Farmers Branch, and they were looking at relocating, and this was the site they were looking at. It's very interesting, going back to incentives, that they decided to, so Colony right next door gave them the award, the ultimate incentive package that you could, you could give. But at the end, they decided to stay in Farmers Branch, because again, that was the, that place they, that was where their employees were comfortable, so we didn't get it, Colony didn't get it, they just decided to stay in Farmers Branch. So, so it's a developer we worked very closely. I wanna point out to the southern sector, because we are right now, and I don't know if you would like to elaborate on that, is we're very involved in that development of this southern piece, because the council remembers that we own 114 acres, close to Houghine Development. And, and that's an area that we're, right now, we're working on to create that sense of place, of space, maybe not again with a logo, but creating a green environment as you're coming into, into Lewisville, with the 114 acres that we own, that's all that need to be developed, and it be part of it for, for green space and start that connection to the green right there, place where you're coming into Lewisville. So, that's something the council...
One point that, that, that brand play, or one...
I get Paris' perspective over there, yeah, please.
So, this is basically, this is the Houghines development right here with the station, this is the piece of property we own, and all of that, as you go up north to Hebron Parkway, the frontage of Hebron is, is Houghines off the map, we own right here, and if you go up there, in this area where the lakes are, and these are where the apartment building is.
That sure seems like a project that we can wrap our heads around a lot easier than the other seven.
Exactly. Right. And these are, I think, and then once something like this happens, then it's easier to approach some of these owners, and look to see what the city has invested here, and then talk to the model, they, you know, to help us with that area. So, so this is something that's going to be happening, something you're gonna be seeing very, very, very soon. We are collaborating with the Houghines, with DCTA who's participating with us on their stations, and up here, and with Alpha. So, so these are something that we can make change right away in days.
She says collaborating what we're doing. We are going to have a development plan moved forward, and so, use that. So, Houghines has agreed to share the cost with us, as well as DCTA. In addition to that, we're talking about round 30, 40, that's where the kayakers do, or takeout. So, we've already started working on the design of the takeout for the river trail.
Well, that piece of property, we have a lot of challenges, don't we? As I recall, talking about it in the past?
We do have a lot of challenges, some, a lot of it's already been brought up, a lot of it, yes.
Okay, and that was, that was the issue, it's a lot of it was...
A lot of it's been brought up.
Okay. Good, a couple things, just as you're going through the process, if it is something you get your arms around on that side of the highway particularly, because you've got a developer, you have an investor, collective that's happening to identify a market. But someone said earlier, well, boy, it's nice to go down in there, but you gotta get your car and go to a restaurant or something. Well, you've got all of that up here, and what's happened is, is the water, there's a disconnection, and you have the service side of these properties facing where the new developments happen. So, what we were thinking was, if you can taste, you know, the best of the best that's in here, and maybe focus it in more on the northern area, and allow some places where I think your land, as the ratio comes across somewhere in here, that then says if this is interested back, it's, it's another run, then that, that seems to be an opportunity that's fairly easy to take advantage of, to allow this area to work better, which is one of those places that we're talking about. And, you know, I know you've got land that you've, that for some offers and other things that could happen around that, all that's real positive. This side is, it's very complicated, it's had issues, but you've got a professional owner that knows what they're doing, and knows the right time, maybe to do something, that something might be selling to someone else that may have a different business plan in mind. But if you understand the supply and the demand factors that the mall is working on, look, that's the fundamental first step that needs to happen, in my opinion. And then look at the real estate opportunity of what's around it, and look at other precedents in the region that have allowed things to change on a conventional shopping center like that. And then just get in a real dialogue with that owner, and just explore options with them, without saying, you gotta do X, Y, and Z. And you, and that is a case where you bring something to the table if you can, from an incentive standpoint, and says, we can sweeten the pot if you work with us, and maybe it's a small incremental phased process, but this is the five pound town gorilla that's affecting everything all around here.
Well, I think there's fear to go...
There is?
No, well, it's, I mean, it, like you said, we walk up to them and we say, hey, we, we wanna change some things. Whoa, 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 you know, we, we like what we're doing.
So, it's kind of how, how you, how you make that approach. Neil's got a comment in the back here.
Yeah, we've wrestled with that 600 pound gorilla for many years, it seems now. And TJ had brought up the concept of a designer space, which I'd actually like to see expanded to more than just what we typically think of a designer space, something that is also an artist enclave, and a, you know, woodworking, and you name it. And I've wondered, would it, what do you think the idea of going to the mall management company and saying, look, you wanted, you've got this space, it's not productive right now, or it's not producing what it should, you need foot traffic, why don't you lease space to create this type of entity, give it at a price where it's affordable for that operation, with the understanding that the return on that investment is the foot traffic that you will generate, and the awareness that you'll generate, which will then encourage other businesses to come back into Vista Ridge?
I think that those are good ideas. The only thing I would say is that the folks that own the mall are the experts. And as long as everyone recognizes they're the expert, they're always, even if it's the wrong idea, they're always gonna have the right idea, because they're the expert.
And they are.
Yeah. But, one of the niceties about that though, is there is a ton of information out there. The only way to solve what's happening in here is an economic, financial solution, the only way to do that, which may be about placemaking, maybe about retinity, maybe about interesting uses, but ultimately, fundamentally, they're working at this as a real estate product that's making cash flow for them, and how much investment do they have to put in over a certain period of time? And they, you know, there was investment that was put in, you know, X years ago, has to be addressed on that level. So, you can look at sales tax and the performance over that over the last 20 years, that data is there, you can look at that. You can compare it against their competition, that's easy to do. And you put facts out on the table to the experts, the facts they already know. It says, I think we both have an issue here, let's talk about it. And then get into those kinds of discussions.
Because they still is, I know they went through the deal, and then they got called out. Do the, the new company owns this now? Do they also own Frisco, the place, Frisco? That's why I thought, so they own the mall, Frisco. And they also own, have the mall, Great Lakes.
Yeah, they, they are a huge mall, a fascination.
So, they gotta free right there, that they, they don't plan just on this, they plan on this one, the Alamo and Great Lakes, and the Frisco one, to supply the needs to that population in that area.
And what's, what's good about it, in my view, is they, that's right, and they be seeing that, regionally speaking, they're supplying the region in their way they can, and they're, they're at various different price points, and this shows up in their portfolio on one of those levels. So, that's all fine, that's, there's no way you can change that, but what you can do is allow them to be even more successful in their business plan. Because I doubt if their business plan is not to let the thing go down in chaos, that's not their business plan. It's for it to be successful, is to understand what their business plan is, and then look at ways within your control that can assist them in that. And if, for instance, some of that might be adding some additional density in here to create some interesting places, you know, we looked, we worked on the expansion of Great Fun Hills back in the day, when the theater came and worked on that project in the beginning, actually. And, but that theater, after that happened, was the most successful at that time, the successful AMC in the whole chain, just because they had a couple restaurants out prime, and silly, silly, simple little additions. Within the context of the price point you're trying to get at, what can make this better? They already have a solution to that, I guarantee it. The issue is, they probably don't have the money, or maybe they're, they have the money, but they're wanting to spend it in Arizona right now versus here. Well, if you can come in and sweeten the pot a little bit, as long as you know what their issues are, and you're, you're both sharing, dealing in the same facts, that's the best, in my opinion, that's the best way to have a conversation, versus, let me tell you about this great user that we talked to in ICFC. You know that? They're not gonna listen to that.
Well, too, what you said about from the other side of the freeway, if we are able to create a revitalized area that brings in a new crowd and is getting a higher bit of attention, they're gonna see that.
Yeah.
At that point, say, they'll pay, so we, we, we do this, that.
Yeah.
So, at that time, they're looking at a new board, James.
There was a theme project in San Monica, California, some years ago, where there was a mall, it was small, it was kind of like this, and then there was this kind of walking district that was near it, just say it's this area. And the walking district cycled down, because the mall was there. So, the city came in and worked to retool the walking district, and it became very successful, and drove a lot of other things. And sure enough, you know what happened? A complete mall overall. So, it, it is an economic market solution, ultimate.
So, as we think about this southern gateway, for one, I presume that you all are comfortable with this being an important focal point, that, that should be part of our big, in my right of thinking, yeah? Okay. So, in terms of the action priorities, discussing with the owners addition of new allowable uses, this is that area that, that Paris was just pointing to on the east side of 35. So, that idea of trying to concentrate the tenants and create new opportunities in the south. The second, promoting and supporting that, that new bridge...
What is that?
We're bidding next month.
Bidding next month? You all couldn't hear her. The strong graphic landscape presence on the gateway, so again, the implementation of the corridor plan, Neil, you've got your comment noted there as well. Public improvement district or TIF financing as, as a way to maintain things. Incentive strategy for each of those concepts that are noted. And then, this is the, the package that Paris has just been talking to you all about, in terms of strengthen and support the mall. So, are you all comfortable with these as priority action items within this focal point? Are there changes, questions, modifications? Okay, then let's move on to, can we get that part? The northern gateway area, and this one, I know we've got that, that board as well. And so, this is the same kind of concern as you're coming from the north into, into Lewisville, what's the identity, what's going on there? This, of course, relates directly back also to both DCTA station and to the Green Centrepiece, and the, the character and identity that we talked about yesterday in that regard. So, the action priorities that we've identified for this one, there are three action priorities. The first one is this idea of work with the master developer and landowners to create a waterfront resort, and the example that's here, Horseshoe Bay in Marble Pond, so those of you familiar with that in the hill country, that's a very special kind of a place, certainly would be unique for this part of the state, for this region. So, so that's, that's number one, as far as short-term action priorities here. The second one, work with the property owners to achieve the two different development districts. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. Okay, I, I, it's talking about two districts, and I've gone past before we said about the two. The Horseshoe Bay part on the east side of the highway, so towards the lake, and then the mixed-use community on the west side, which is one of the ideas that's in the I-35 corridor plan. So, it's really those two together, that's the, that's the focus of this northern gateway.
I'll go back to that one. The very bottom, the green, the art features along the highway. We looked at, seven years ago, I don't think it cost anything, I think we had the ability to do it, that little small lake, it's on the west side of the highway, that separates Hammond and Lewisville. I think it's actually still in Lewisville, I think. Putting a big water mountain feature that's spray, and you can have a deliberate sign that says, Lewisville, welcome to Lewisville, something, something, where you wanna do, but then have a big water feature, because they're moving the freeway over now, where that's really, people coming, they're gonna be going right over that thing. It'd be like, almost you could reach out and touch that thing, and it'd show just a big spray, and you talk about feature that's, that costs you nothing other than the pump generation make the spray.
Which one is real?
Yeah, it's real. When that freeway gets moved over there, you're gonna almost be able to reach out and touch that.
So, that's, so that point really resonates with you there.
I just think that'd be, that's a perfect spot, that's where I'd see Levis would be in.
Apparently with the core.
There you go. I don't know.
Okay, okay, so that, that really reinforces that, that idea about, in terms of the east side. Okay, so the number two action, I've worked with private property owners and developers in an approach to achieve these, these are obviously not things the city does all on its own, but you've got to have that partnership with the private sector. Aggressively use financial incentives here in these areas. So, those, those are the three items for action here. There's obviously already been quite a lot of work done in this area, both between, between the I-35 plant and the Lake Lewisville master plan over there. Paris, are there a couple of things you wanna highlight, and then we'll talk some about this, this northern gateway as an important focal point?
Yeah, I mean, this, and I know it's probably obvious, but this has the opportunity to be the biggest game changer of just about everything that you all have talked about, in my opinion. I think the Green Centrepiece is another one, but this one is doable, in my opinion, because you've got folks apparently that have interest. So, when Gaylord came in, you know, and did the deal in Great Fun, no one disputes that, it's been a huge success for them. It's been a huge success in, in meetings, and, but it's, it's not about its specific location, if you think about it. When that was under construction, probably everyone here thought, well, it's gonna be this neat lakefront resort, and you're gonna be able to go have, you know, go, go eat out on the water and stuff. They didn't do that. That, that could have happened just about anywhere, the fact it just happens to be on the lake, we don't have a lakefront resort. So, I like that concept of the Horseshoe Bay, because you go there to be there on Lake LBJ and see all the fun.
They don't have that.
Now, I know the core's an obstacle, I get that. Existing ownership here and there, it's pregnant, but you've got, there's a big golf course that's out there. You've got the land and the lease issues, all that, all that can be worked through, in my opinion, if everyone's working towards a common goal, and you have an existing single family neighborhood that's there, the homes are already sold. Those, it immediately provides value to those homes, which then creates a situation where the homes themselves can be redeveloped by the existing property owners, who they choose to sell to if they want to. So, that is an enormous opportunity that I would be all in on if I were you. There's nothing like that in the metroplex, there is nothing like that, there's that deal over in Rockwell, and it's way out on the edge, that you're right in the middle, very far removed from the water, the interstate. Yeah. So, I think this, this is exciting, that has, because of all the potential it can do, and for the city, and, you know, with the whole 35 experience, et cetera. And from what I understand, you've got developers that have expressed interest, and there's a lot of details in there that you all know about, but I don't, but on the surface of it, there's huge potential. There's a lot of details in there that you all know about, but I don't, but on the surface of it, there's huge potential.
Could not agree more, it's one of the biggest issues, the biggest goals that we, as council, need to accomplish.
The northern gateway?
Northern gateway, yes. The anchor of the northern gateway being the lake, the lake development property that we've been working on.
And I guess my question is, is Bob, I've talked a little bit about everything, you need to do, when you need to do the golf course. We've always thought about, well, not always, lately, to be in more direction and do it in two phases. Do the northern phase, which is up here on this little map right here, and then later looking at doing the southern part, which goes down towards the dam or the, uh, golf course and all that. Is that still, in your mind, you want to separate the two? Or do you want to, would you think it's better to look at the overall plan of both of them instead of separating the north and the south?
I would have a strategy for the whole area. And then I would look at who are the folks, who are the staple of folks that I have at my disposal to implement our collective idea, your collective idea. Um, and if there's, you know, I, from what I understand from a little that I know, is in the northern area, there's a lot of complexity. The leases and people that see a ton of guy and all that. Okay, well then, maybe we need to look at the other area.
That was my thought. The southern area seems to me like there is a lot less complexity to it. The only thing we've got with southern area really is golf.
It's only concessionary.
It's only concessionary.
The issue you have on the southern part is, of course, going to require you, any uses would have to be relocated.
Right, because we've got East Hill Park.
Yeah, you'd have to relocate.
We've got East Hill Park, and I think we've already discussed that, but core, you think that we moved, we, as long as we, we could double.
Have to relocate.
Well, you know, remember when you talked earlier about the canals and, and all that, and mentioned the cost of that? You know, twenty million dollars, ten million dollars, whatever the number is. This is a, a prime example of that, that says if they're concerned, the only concerns I've ever heard about the southern area is, well, it's a little, it's a little more removed off the highway, you've got some stuff, long ways you go in there. And I think even at the most basic sense of things, whoever would be doing some assembly, for instance, it's not going to be the numbers that we just talked about, it's not going to be that. Now, if it may be removed from the water because of the core, there are plenty of resorts all over the place that have neat green features between where the buildings are and where the water is, that is a part of the resort environment. They could be open to the public. It could be, is that, maybe the park just shifts down, but it's designed like a resort. I, I mean, that's, it's such a huge learning opportunity that.
What is the lease arrangement right now with the golf courses?
It's, it's consistent with the master lease, and it runs through twenty twenty-five. Up the left here. If I could add just one more.
Of course, that would be a lot easier to, to work through, you don't have large buildings and structures and restaurants and.
And that, there may be an incentive there to do, to improve the golf course, make it a more.
Championship style.
Championship title golf course, it is a resort destination area.
The golf money the city Dallas is putting in, the deal that they're doing right now, they, they think that there's some merit to that. But, uh, the other point I would make, there was one reason here, talking about master developer, and you can use that term in a couple of different ways. In this case, I think the city is the master coordinating entity, because there are always going to be particular developers and landowners that have their specific interest. That's okay, we want them to make money, that's great. But if that interest gets in the wrong path with the, the momentum of progress to achieve the overall vision that has been talked about here, there are other folks that could be brought into the equation. And all I would say is, if there's one little particular set of issues that are holding this thing up, expand the dialogue. Because this is a unique position that I think would change the entire complexity of the whole city, actually, if it's done right.
So, folks comfortable with that?
I'm certainly not, I'm saying we can get rid of all the part, I'm not saying they need what they want. Keep up, but they're circulating, you know, the science, the science. But we also have some other areas, we, if you had to, to accommodate core, would you relocate that area? The, of course, the city that are, if you relocate, does it have to be on the lake?
Well, it, it depends on what, what you're talking about, and of course, the core would give us the final decision. But, uh, they're going to want a campground, that's going to have to be mitigated, relocated somewhere. The, I don't think that they would want it relocated someplace that didn't have lake access.
Okay. Places, we've got some places now that is more accessible to the vast majority of the citizens that would be relocated to, it wouldn't be on the lake. But it's more accessible to more citizens.
Well, obviously, the athletic fields, everything that we have out there has, has to do with the lake, right?
That's, that's correct, and there is, we'd have to look at the spacing at East Hill Park if you were to relocate it over there. One of the things you have to look at, if, if you're going to redesign an athletic complex to replace Lake Park, it's, it's going to be with the current design and it's going to take more space than we currently have with the athletic complex at, at Lake Park. You can, you can compare Lake Park to what we have over at Greve Park, for kind of an example of what's needed in there. Uh, the, the big issue in relocating it, I think it can be your day use area for what the public wants, the boaters. Uh, but they're, they're still going to want access to boat ramps, they're still going to want beach area, they're still going to want to be able to keep me along the beach area. We don't have any of that over at East Hill Park, so if there's a way to accommodate all of that, but, but I think that's going to be the key issue.
Well, Rudy was saying, oh, it doesn't have to be in Louisville. We could work with another community to relocate along this on core property to put those same amenities in.
Dealing with the core.
Correct.
It, it, and, um, you know, what we hear from the rest.
Like you've said, they did that over on Pilot Hill. They moved some of that stuff there and put it in a different area that wasn't actually high building.
So that, so I think, you know, some of those, yeah, those, those are the kinds of questions that I think you could look at in the context of this, uh, these action priorities for this northern gateway. Uh, what I'm hearing and from y'all is, this is really a key priority. Greg obviously said it very well. Uh, are, are you comfortable with these action items to move forward on this?
And then we feel, mom, if it goes from there down to the ball area.
In your debt. Okay, so, uh, so I, so let's, um, let's move on and, I'm trying to get my clicker to work. Uh, the last of the three identity focal points, uh, is the Business one twenty-one, I thirty-five area. And again, this is, this is one that, that came up in the discussions with the citizens, with committees, with the, the rat work, the consultant team reviewing the work that has already been done on your I thirty-five studies as being a, an important, uh, focal point and really part of the identity for the area. So there are eight action priorities here, so let me try to, to run through those quickly and then, uh, Paris can probably have some additional comment on some of those. And I think we've got a, a board here, I think, on this one, that you can refer to also. Uh, so on the east side of thirty-five, um, design and funding about some pine trees to create a green identity point. And again, this ties in with that identity we've been talking about for the last couple of days for Louisville. Uh, working with the property owners to really create a new kind of a concept for this investment area, not just stick with trying to deal with what's there now and the kind of uses that are there now, but, uh, working with them to figure out a new approach. Uh, consider a master developer, uh, to coordinate that redevelopment. Uh, and then looking at the barriers, if there are any, that the city can help address. So that, again, we're trying to say, uh, are there ways that the city can help remove the barriers that are preventing the private sector from making the investments that you'd like to see in this area? Okay, on the west side of thirty-five, uh, keep those, keep the best of the retail tenants that are being, uh, that are being moved because of the, the I thirty-five widening. Work with the owners, again, offer incentives to renew or improve. Some of the things that are, are listed here are ones we've already been touching on, on particularly our discussion on the southern gateway. Uh, so some of those similar tools would be relevant here. Uh, number eight, looking at the, uh, legal non-performing uses and structures, figure out ways to incentivize their performance, uh, along this area. I think that's our, yeah, that's our, our, our set of actions. So there's actions, uh, thinking a little, there's a little different kind of a game plan on the east side of the freeway and the west side of the freeway, uh, and then looking at how to get the city's incentives, the other thing, other tools that you have to really support that. Paris, do you want to add any other highlights?
Yeah, just the, the west and the east side are obviously different. The west side is, is really.
I'm going to go back to the map while you're talking.
The west side is, it has, is characterized by a fragmented ownership, but the opportunity that's being generated is the land that's being, you know, that, that's being acquired and, and that isn't, instead of being removed, is creating opportunities for land assemblies, for to infill development, especially right on the corner, at the hard corner. That's very challenging to work through that, and the only, maybe the market will do it on its own. Um, so it may just be a situation where you have some basic, uh, development standards that you put in place and you sit back and you let that happen. Um, it's an issue of priority for you. The east side is different because you've got DCTA as a large landowner, you know, and, uh, all this land back in here. Uh, you've got some infrastructure issues of making, you know, the connection back in here, and this gets a little complicated, all this works. You've got old real estate projects in here, uh, you've got the trailer park, uh, in there. But you've got large blocks of land to work with, essentially. Uh, and you've got, I think Hillwood owns this, you, there's already a large master developer type entity that is a stakeholder that exists here right now. Um, so we look at it as, as, I think, the same way your study in the, uh, in the highway, I thirty-five study, was to look at this whole zone as a new infill development opportunity here. And not to say that uses go, you know, some of these could remain and there could be a portion of that that is repurposed or maybe not. But at a minimum, uh, there probably needs to be some development standards that occur that, that at least affect the identity of that all, the one twenty-one business. Okay, new infrastructure pieces come in, you look at the public land in here and some landscape improvements of those pine trees, which everyone recognizes as you come through, maybe there's more of that that occurs in here. There's a lot of land, uh, there's a lot of land in here that's adjacent to Green Center. Just adjacent to it, it's, it's the trail end, end of that. So our thought was, you take downtown Old Town, uh, you take the northern gateway, you take this area and the southern gateway, that's a lot of work for, realistically, for twenty twenty-five years, that's a lot of work, let alone ten years. Um, but if you start getting things moving in those zones, that's a new, that's a different Louisville from our example.
On that beach right there, just in the, the beach side right there is one twenty-one, the pine trees. Uh, when, uh, as far as a facility business moving in there, it's, it's not a good focal point. I can tell you there was a business that looked at expanding to that area, all the way over to there, but with the height of the new freeway that's going to be there, you can't see that. You're above it, and so it starts raising up far enough back that by the time you get to it, you're past it, you can't get off, you can't see it, and, you know, you had to turn around and come back to this man. But what would be the effectiveness of looking at someday, uh, closing off the one twenty-one where it turns to the mill? Just have that one twenty-one going and closing that off, having it come up a little bit, there's a little street there, just a little bit there, and having that, and having that little corner there, once you do figure your entrance into Old Town from the southern area.
Well, one thing for sure is, if you look at what the, what the public there is, that's a large footprint of land in there, you're right. There's a big footprint of land, and you, you realize that when you get out there, the geometry is screening, everything is covered in there. And there is just kind of spread out, and then what's adjacent to that are teeny tiny little, generally older buildings. So the overall impact visually of this area is, is something that can be better. So I think your point of, well, maybe some of that can tighten up and you can focus on how to get folks out mill into downtown is a good idea.
What, what you're saying is, is close it off the Mill Street entrance?
Well, just, just the beach, let's say that, that piece of corner there where the pine trees are. Let's say that, that went out there. And so you had, right, closed off the turn of one twenty-one on the Mill Street, and you went up just past there, and you had a big boulevard entrance right there that took you straight up Mill Street. It went straight into town, and you knew the street skating from starting right there, you do street skating all the way to Main Street. All the street, outside of that, I don't know if it worked, that's why I asked. Sit here looking at it, we said that boulevard.
Very good point, Mayor. Uh, we had looked at it as part of our I thirty-five plan, the redevelopment plan of I thirty-five, because as Paris said, and everybody knows, that is one of the strangest intersections we have. It's just very confusing, it's not good for traffic. So we have with that an option of not closing, but then actually re, rerouting some, some of these roads. And what we need to do is just start our dialogue with Tech Stop, because a lot of them are all Tech Stop roads. So we need to do that, there's a way of doing it, and, and we have struggled with it.
Now, I think that, that focal reference area, that massive boulevard up in the middle, you know, there.
So building on that idea of making this a focal point.
And so that concept of kind of sweetening the pot, that there's no money in this, that you would have to contribute in this idea is, well, I mean, some of it would figure as the intersection, but as that kind of, and this becomes more of a traditional intersection, let's say the server comes in and ties into one twenty-one, um, in a more normal way. Well, in that land, they could create and could be, could be contributed into these properties in a way that, that allows them to lower their bases and maybe make it, uh, you know, more appealing for redevelopment, particularly when all this gets done, because this is, this is a regional intersection when this is done. That changes the real estate dynamic of that. And the fact that you have hit properties back in here, to me says there's a big play. Not that all of these get acquired, but there's a big play to look at this whole zone and also the gateway into downtown and, you know, that corner, and all of that is up for redevelopment, in my opinion.
So, so the idea of this being one of these identity focal points with the action priority, uh, to be working on those, that, really that new land use and investment concept on the east side, and the idea of a master developer, uh, possibly on that east side. And working with Tech Stop on that one. On the west side, I bet it. Again, looking at incentives for redevelopment, revitalization here. Uh, I think that what may make sense, uh, just so that we don't kind of forget about it, would be to add an item here to emphasize the importance of that road and rerouting and reconnecting to make sure that that gets emphasized here. And Nika, I know we've already been working on that in the I thirty-five plan, but to make sure that that comes through clearly on, uh, the priorities for this area as well, I would suggest that we might want to add another bullet here, another item, of course, for the short term, to really, uh, look at how that, how the roadway and the transportation aspects of this work out. Does that make sense, Nika?
Yes.
But it's all confusing, yeah.
Yeah, right. So it's make sure that that comes through clearly here, that that's one of the items that you want to see action on in the short term, and there's progress there. Are you all comfortable with, with this being an identity focal point, with this approach to take here?
I like, we've talked a lot about misuse. I think that western part of that intersection, it was brought up the other day, could be an outstanding potential mixed-use development. I mean, right now, that, that whole shopping center, that whole, what would be the southwest quadrant, is nothing but, uh, empty retail space and big, huge parking lot. And it has been for quite a while, and, um, I think there's a lot more potential.
More potential, yes.
Sorry about northwest, quarter, one twenty-one and.
One twenty-one, it's, I, I say southwest, Business one twenty-one, but it's kind of.
So it's two shops.
Exactly.
Right.
Where the Kroger is and then where.
What, some of the things that we're struggling over on that west side is just the fact there's a lot of outside buildings that are older that are in there, and the, and the jungle of them don't read together as one kind of, you know, imaginable area. With, with, uh, with the highway construction coming through, the acquisition of properties, it's creating a situation where. a situation where opportunity, if nothing, if the market would just left to itself, only little small buildings can fit back in on some of that land. So you could just cement the same problem again for the next 15, 20 years unless someone comes in and interjects a discussion that those property owners haven't thought about. It says, have you thought about maybe collecting your properties together for larger redevelopment? That takes a master development entity discussion for them to realistically to think about that because they're probably thinking through their own plans of what they own, which is what we're discussing.
So there again is a role where the city can play that role of engaging that discussion. Okay. So we're comfortable on the identity focal points, big move, that's the last of the nine, so now we've covered all of the big moves. I'm going to jump ahead on our PowerPoint because we did talk about the moves eight and nine yesterday, and I want to go down to the part about our next steps. Just the sections that we want to talk about to wrap up our discussion here. Okay, so we talked about this. We've talked about a vision and a set of big moves that really shapes an identity and also sets some priorities for action for Louisville. There are three things that we think are kind of the immediate next steps as far as, you know, the question and the discussion that we've had off and on of, okay, how do we actually get this done? What needs to happen next? What's the top priority out of those set of priorities? And so these three things are the ones that we see as being sort of the most immediate next steps to be done. Firstly, to finalize the plan, based on the discussion that we've had here over the last several days, the consultant team, Wendy, and all of us on the consultant team will be working to develop a draft document. We've been using PowerPoint slides. Obviously, you need to end up with something that's a document that somebody could pick up and read and understand what we're talking about. So that'll be the first thing. Once that's finished, we think that it's important for you all to adopt that so that it has the value of being something that is officially the city's policy, the city's set of priorities. The plan that is shaping up is very much a reflection of the community and the kind of input that has been received throughout this process, all throughout the process and in particular, the folks on the committees, the committee chairs who have been here with you the last couple of days, but all those committee folks. So we really want to see an event that shows the appreciation for the work and the time that the community has contributed to this and then making that plan available. So that's, I think, an important component of celebrating the progress and that also starts to tell the new story that Louisville has a vision and has this image of where you're going over about the next 10 years. Then the item three that you see here is that staff will start working on planning implementation. I said at the beginning that the course of our discussions, there are 69 items that we've discussed as key action priorities under those nine big moves. And if we think about this as being, say, the work for the next three years or so, I think that that's a scale that you can get your hands around and that can be manageable. I don't think that you're going to do all 69 things this year, but I think that there are a number of them that you can do. And so I think Donna may want to elaborate more on this, but I guess what we're thinking at this point is that the staff will come back to you now that we've got some good direction from you about this set of action priorities, that they can come back and give you a clearer sense of what can be happening in your fiscal year 2014, '15 with the way your resources are already situated, which things are going to need some plans and some preparation costs and so forth that you might see coming in in '15, '16. And I think really that of the things that we've talked about, a number of them can happen simultaneously. So I really don't think it's necessary to say, okay, out of the 69, this is number one, because there are pieces that would be the responsibility of different folks, different departments, different parts of the city that can be going along concurrently. So I think what we're envisioning here is that staff will come back and give you a sense of what's realistic to expect to get done this next year, what about those following couple of years, so that by the end of about three years, you really have had action on those, the items that we've got here. Counsel, let me grab that microphone. Donna, if you want to elaborate on that.
Counsel, what I would envision is somewhat of a chart that shows all of these various big moves and a plan to implement each one and the responsible party. So we'll lay it out very clearly for you, step by step. And as Karen said, I was going to be working on part of it in the Parks Department. Eric and Cleve will be running forward with some of the new neighborhood initiatives. So you won't see, I don't think, a lot of costs associated during your next budget year. I think the next budget year will be a time for us to really step back and plan and look at these alternatives. But we will be bringing forward this step one, an overall plan of implementation.
And that's item one?
That's, well, actually, item one is the consultant team finalizing your plan.
But then bring that to the show.
And then you would adopt that plan and from that, staff will roll out really more specific implementation initiatives.
So it's kind of that number three, but with sort of a chart so that you can keep track of who's doing what, when.
And that, I understand, I guess my question is on item one, when are we looking to do it then?
Based on what we've heard the last two days, you didn't have lots of changes. I think that the group can finalize that plan fairly quickly.
I think so. Within the next month, maybe sooner, but we got a pretty good draft of it. So now that, you know, and I've made some notes over the last couple of days, it's things that we need to probably add, maybe wordsmith a little bit, but I think we will have that within the next month ready.
I'd like to say that too by July, no later than July.
And then I guess once you get that, you can let us know through the workshop session if you think you can get that done in an hour before, council, you know, Saturday morning or...
We might do it over two workshops. I think it might be difficult to do it in a single workshop setting, but...
And I don't mind if we can do it Saturday morning or something. I think we'll sort of counsel consider, but to me, it might be better to do it all one week instead of...
So you prefer Saturday?
I don't know.
I'd probably agree with you. I suppose you're starting it and then, what, minimum two weeks later, back in again.
You're probably with me to do it one evening, you know, do it one evening or one Saturday or something like that. Is everybody okay with that? Counsel back here, okay with that?
Evening, huh?
He had even had earlier.
Maybe off Monday sometime?
Yeah, we just went over. I think it'd be better to do it, like he said, an hour, two weeks later, you could have to...
Now you're trying to forget what's happening.
Bye, Donna.
Okay, so the council's comfortable with this kind of, these are the immediate next things to do. And then I think, okay, so we've really kind of covered that. The last piece that we had in this presentation that we wanted to touch base with you are some of the tools that really cut across these big moves and help us with more than one big move. And so I want to just go through those fairly briefly and again, Donna and others may also want to elaborate on it. But these are some of the things that we think are important in terms of the overall success in carrying out this vision that we've been talking about and developing. The first bullet that you see here is a Vision 2025 Standing Committee. One of the things that I have found...
I'm sorry, let me interrupt real quick. I just told that the food is ready for lunch. So I want to ask you, because you know what you're going to do, is it better for you to just go ahead and sit and then we have lunch? Or is it better for us to get lunch and then sit here and eat?
Yeah. Let me just go ahead and just cover these and then if everybody can get the lunch, we can keep talking about it.
And that's what I was going to ask my ass, counselor. She does that. We can still keep the meeting session and eat and have conversations in that morning as long as we don't interfere.
All right, so my experience in a lot of different communities is that once you've got a plan completed, it's really important to make sure that the elected officials and the community are understanding what's happening to get it done, that you can see the results, people know something's going on, they feel like their work has led to something and isn't just gathering dust on the shelf. Because of the level of involvement and enthusiasm that y'all had and those folks that you appointed to your committee, we feel like it would be a good idea to have a standing committee. Maybe it's not, you know, maybe some folks don't feel like they want to continue, maybe there's some additional folks you might want to consider on it. But basically, have a community role in helping y'all make sure you stay on track. And so the concept here would be that that committee might meet perhaps quarterly and just hear from staff on what's happening, what's going on, have a time to ask questions, make comments and suggestions, that they can be helping you get the word out of the community about what's going on and what's happening with the ideas that they were so integral in developing. We also think that there should be a process of ongoing updates to this vision plan, though it says 2025, you're not going to just say, okay, we're not touching this again until 2025. You're going to want to periodically look at your progress. Conditions may change, things may be more successful than you thought, different opportunities may present themselves. So you want to be in a position that you can modify your course as you need to. And so we think that that committee could also help participate in that. There are, as you know, in the appendices, many, many, many additional specific kinds of recommendations that did not come up to the level of these top 69 action priorities right now. So as you do a review process and you see how you're doing, what progress you're making, it may be that you want to add some of those other ones in for years six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, or what have you. So we think that it's a good idea to continue that connection with a committee in the community that will help you get the word out and help give you feedback on how things are happening. So that's the first one. Second, Blue Ribbon Task Force, particularly to consider capital projects, needs for those capital improvements, ways to fund those capital improvements. I would imagine that this is a little more specific kind of a task than the overall standard committee. So yes, you might have some overlapping membership, but perhaps this is a smaller, more concise kind of group and a shorter term sort of a thing that they would want to, that you would want to have them working with you on those things. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, let's talk about that. Steve just handed out an overview of the, how a Blue Ribbon Committee would function. The Geo Bond program was approved back in 2003. At this point, we've actually, all of that authorization has been issued. Many of the discussions over the last two days deals with capital projects. So of course, those aren't the only capital projects that are out there. We have a full street assessment that's been done, so you need to be doing some investment in your roadways. We have an alley assessment that's underway, so additional investment in your alleys, facilities. We have discussions going on right now related to equipment facility for our public safety and the rest of the city operation. So there are various needs out there. So my recommendation is that it is time again to appoint a Blue Ribbon Committee. The Blue Ribbon Committee would be a committee that would step back and look at all your capital needs. In the past, when you looked at it back in 2002, 2003, it really was totally focused on Geo Bonds to an extent. At that time, you remember also, the park projects were carved out and that's when the 4B sales tax was approved. So again, this committee would look not only at Geo Bond funding for projects, but cash funding, COs, and the stormwater that we've talked about at the last street treat. You notice we didn't have an update on that. I do need to bring that back to you for further discussion, but I would recommend at this time that stormwater be considered as a funding alternative for your capital projects and be considered along with these other options. So if you look at your timeframe, we're looking at a November 3, 2015 bond election. And to get to that point, you have to work through with your committee appointment in September. That gives plenty of time, I think, for staff to work through and develop the 10-year capital program. And then you have your election on, not one of the busier Novembers, if you were trying to use November 14, you're dealing with the governor's election. If you were to go November 2016, that's a presidential election. So I think November 3, 2015 is a good target and that would drive a Geo Bond sale in 2016.
So that bullet is obviously again connected back to a number of these different big moves we've been discussing. Let me cover those last two bullets briefly and then y'all can get your food and sit down and we can continue our conversation on them. A future land use plan, including strategic area plans for vacant land and redevelopment. We talked, when we were talking about the Green Center piece, we already talked about the idea of a future land use plan, that this is not parcel by parcel, it is not a change in the zoning, but rather it gives a geographic explanation of the policy direction that you're putting in place. And so it's valuable to you as a city as you think about things like your capital improvements, it's valuable to the property owners and the community in terms of saying, here's the direction that we're looking at at a broader level than looking at what's the zoning happened to be at this moment currently. Even though there's a lot of the city that is already developed, I think that there's value in having this kind of a plan. These days, those plans are not solely just a certain use, like this is single-family residential, this is density, and this is highway commercial or what have you, but they can reflect some of the policy areas like we've been talking about. They can reflect certain kinds of mixed use areas, they could reflect the kind of neighborhood conservation that we talked about under the thriving neighborhoods. And I think the idea of having strategic plans for the key places, the key redevelopment and key vacant land could be a part of this as well. So we think that that's a good additional tool that will help you, both help you communicate this new, the identity and this vision, but also help you achieve that vision. So we think that's important. The last bullet here, reviewing and updating regulatory and incentive structure, again, this came up in several different big moves and so we just want to highlight that as an overall concern to make sure that the tools that you have are really working in the direction of where you want to be going. So that's a matter of reviewing those, updating them where that's appropriate, both from the standpoint of zoning, development kinds of things, and then economic development kinds of incentives. So that's a lot of the discussion we had this morning. So with that, why don't we go ahead and people can help themselves to the food and then we'll finish our discussion of these and any other items before we wrap up.
Okay, before we get to food, I just want to thank everybody here that is here in the council and also wanted to thank the people that worked on the 2025 year that people were coming and being here tonight, not just today, but the last three days. We had Steve Southwell, Resource Management, Karen Lockwood, Resource Management, Victoria, Resource Management, on the growth. We had Mary Alma Miska on diversity. We had Amanda Ferguson, we had Regency. So we want to thank you for kind of being consistent in the time that we had. With that, as she said, after seven months, we're not going to adjourn the meeting so that way the meeting is still fat. Now what I did is at least three council members plus me can be in the room one time. If you're going, council member, you're going to leave this room only one at a time because we're at four. That way the meeting can stay in process and we can continue to talk, correct?
Okay, so help yourselves for food and then we'll wrap up this discussion.
I'm sorry.
In some cities, you do an effort to reach out to people and you get just a little bit of involvement and not a whole lot. And I think your city benefited so much because we had a lot of folks who got really involved in the committees, all those sessions that we had. I know a number of you were at those different big idea sessions last summer. I think that this community really has contributed a great deal and it's often hard for it to happen. So I think that speaks really well of the people who are in Louisville and what their concern and their connection to the community. So that's why I think we're enthusiastic about the implementation of this vision, you know, getting the word out, having the people on the committee really continuing to be ambassadors to get to the rest of Louisville and let people know what's going on and get involved. But you've had a really great benefit by the involvement of all the folks, of those that you...
But you've had a really great benefit by the involvement of all the folks, the folks that you were just recognizing a few minutes ago.
Brooklyn, that's the community that we're here to have a good, strong, positive sentiment from citizens. Even when that's been at this office evening, but they like to tweak, do some different, it's not a negative thing, it's not like, you know. I don't know if people realize, we can, obviously, we have, I mean, people will be in the bus or regular basis. There's been times between homes that average five, 300,000 dollars. And I know there's people that, that's, like, they... People, schools, I don't know, they live here in Louisville and they moved off, like, down the corner and they're keeping that, like, that path. I don't know, maybe once they got into the address, they're probably down there and, well, did that, the property down there? I don't think it's a brick, population, it's, it's, to the population's jail, quite.
Here, one thing I would just like to add, I want to thank Karen Abidi and Kiraus, I mean, they've just done a phenomenal job. I think this plan is superior to what perhaps some nearby cities have created. They've spent, they've been more money on, they've said it very nicely. But the last two days have been, I mean, I watched Sam, because he tells me especially important that he brings such great direction on this plan. That it's a phenomenal blueprint for the next 11 years of Louisville. But I don't think it couldn't happen without the great consulting team that we had. So I just wanted to do a personal thing, do a little bit of...
Hi, Karen, I'm Joe, I've seen what you got of how I eschew to stay out of the process because I didn't want to influence the process. I didn't want people to, or my approval, or what I saw, I want to hear what they, what their approval is. Then from this point, I'm, well, that I was appreciative of all the stuff that you've done here, letting them have their own time here. But I do appreciate all your help.
Well, can I say something to you then? Thank you. While we're all thanking people, it, y'all, it really has been, I mean, Karen, we do a lot of these for different cities. And the staff here has been phenomenal, I mean, phenomenal. And all the, I mean, I've worked with Nika before and I knew she would be great to work with, but just having all the different departments involved throughout. And they come to every single meeting. I mean, we had a bunch of staff at all the different meetings and sitting there with all the committees and not just be in there, but teaching them. I mean, I see you guys on the committee, I mean, I wish I knew as much about my city as probably some of these committee folks have learned. Because they've taken the time to really teach them and dive in and explain detail. Anyway, it's been helpful for us. I love this coming from the city manager's office because it's gotten everyone involved. And everybody else has gotten to be able to see what other departments are doing. So it's, they've been great to work with. I mean, it's really been an enjoyable process for us.
Yeah, and I really want to echo what Wendy said because it is, it's a lot more common for a process like this to be sort of the planning folks and development services folks. And then the other departments look at it as, well, it's not my thing, you know. And so then when you get to the point of implementing, you know, whether it's the code enforcement people or the public works or the parks or the police and fire, whoever, they just kind of like, well, I didn't, you know, that wasn't my thing. I wasn't there, that wasn't my, my deal. Yeah, the manager has to tell me, or the council has to tell me to get involved and has to tell me to do something. But having had the involvement that you've had throughout this process, you know, we were talking about this this morning, so the standpoint of police. Having them engaged all the way along makes it really easy for them to now be able to work on implementation. And they've been part of it, you know, and again, it's true, I think for all, all the departments, that's really...
Ultimately, we are committed about, really, we think about it. So, you know, we need to be involved in the ground level of things like this because, you know, none of us do this by ourselves. We don't do what we do without the help from finance and HR and house and public works and public services and enforcement. You know, it's all, it's all one big team effort. So I thought it'd be important for us to be involved.
So after bragging the departments, I think as an organization, we do everything this way. We don't have one department that owns a project. We own it as a team, as a citywide team. And these people have to spend hours and hours getting lots of like, not these, on top of their normal workload. So I just want to thank everybody here and the dedication, and the dedication they will continue to show.
I'd like to thank everybody. Everybody did a great job.
Thank you, Brad.
No, I'd like to agree, I didn't want anybody saying, sure, everybody's doing well. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Great?
Thank you.
Your own computer doesn't still got that joke.
I know.
Did I really, can we, can we do anything else, Brad?
It's been, it's been a learning experience and it's been fun. I just, just me... Anyway, it's, I just wanted to say it's been, it's been a real learning experience for me and it's also been fun, been a lot of work, but it's been, it's been good.
It was good to hear, bragging really a little bit, but Bob, he was talking about how he really enjoyed this retreat. So it was different from what we had normally done, but he saw everything going in a good, positive way. Good to hear all the positive comments, feedback and excitement for everybody. Right there, when you can't see that, they can just choose to enforce our decision-making stuff as to that we are heading in the right direction. And we appreciate the input from IELTS and make sure we get that direction. With that, I'd like to congratulate, boy. I have to play that game.
Yeah, I agree on that.
So does anybody have that? Stack, anybody have a stack or anything, say? Council, you have any on the side?
Oh, I said no.
That scared me.
Do you like cancer or anything?
Oh, talk about that.
Mayor, we'll go ahead and let somebody go ahead and dipside, go ahead and, unless somebody has anything they want to discuss, because once they adjourn, we can't discuss. Break, councilor. Sounds a little loud, you're already done.
Unless it's a break, Brad.
Yeah, that's it, you want to talk about everybody. And I think Chris said there's pre-ramming off of you. All right, I think we'll go ahead and thank everyone for coming.